Bristol Exchange Club. Not only have they been great friends to me and great company to me, I get to see the incredible work that they do every year organizing and orchestrating and executing the month parade. I get to see how seriously they take it for no other reason, for no other reason than they want to provide a valuable service to the community, to the city of Bristol. They're exceptional people. I always have so much fun when I'm there helping out. When I can't help out, I see Terry and Janet in the audience tonight. We had a lot of fun organizing that first division. So I just wanted to mention that. I wanted to say thank you Bristol Exchange Club. You people are the best. I had a lot of fun and it's good to see so many of you here tonight. That's all.
Just one announcement from me, just very briefly. I just want to remind folks that October is the month that we should check our smoke detectors. And as someone who has had a fire in their house, I can say quite honestly and sincerely that smoke detectors do save lives. So I just want to remind people to check the batteries on your smoke detectors. Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple. For those of you who are aware, we have our friends from Nutmeg that tape all of our TV shows. Those of you who are here in the audience, you will see that there's orange flyers in the front. They're having a fundraiser in order to continue their community programming and they're selling naval oranges or blueberry grapefruit to stay on the air. For those of you who are watching at home, you can order through their website. And for those of you who are here with us, you could always order them and bring them to the next meeting and call them at us if you so choose. $24.99 for a large quartet of grapefruit and $24.99 for oranges. Great fundraiser for the holidays. So those are up front. I also wanted to make everyone aware of and ask that the mayor put it on the website, that Bristol Eastern is in a contest to win to $100,000 through a safe driving commitment program that will support programs at Bristol Eastern. And it's one of those that you can vote every day by going to the celebrate my drive.com and make your commitment to Bristol Eastern, which is a great way to get more money into programs that help all of our students. And obviously, safe driving is a critical issue for all of our high schools. So I'm going to pass that down to the mayor and you can vote every day. Also, in addition to prior safety month, October is also breast cancer awareness month. So for those of you who have experienced this disease or know someone who has, you know how critical it is for mammograms. So the statistics obviously are not getting any better, although I think a lot of them are due to early detection, but it's critical that people take the time, whether this month or in conjunction with their manual of stands to do so. The city of Bristol actually makes it available to all their employees who are eligible to go on work time. That's how important it is. And I also wanted to let everybody know who's watching and is here tonight, that Wheeler Clinic and Bristol Radiological Associates do have labs for women who do not have insurance or cannot afford to have a mammogram. So there are really no excuses within the city of Bristol to not have one. The other announcement, the Veterans Day concert, which you've heard mention of already, there is a poster that's been done. This is going to be featuring the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble Tuesday, November 11th at 7:00 PM at the Memorial Boulevard School. And I'll leave this up in front as well for those of you who'd like more information. I'll be covering that briefly in my committee report as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have a few things. Let me also first add that many of these things that we talk about that are happening in the community are on the Bristol mayor's Facebook page. Follow it there. We post daily the meetings that are going on every night, the next night, as well as things that are happening in the community. So I think that's a great way to learn what's happening. BDTC was just having a special meeting. I stepped out real quick. You saw me step out because I wanted to get a report on what happened. I'm told that the BDTC voted to have Renaissance build Building 1B. That's the bigger building. I believe it was with no city financing. Is that correct? Or that financing didn't come into play yet? BDTC is still working with Renaissance as far as finding all the financing that they can. BDTC is going to have exclusivity until January 31st with the property. This is a motion that was made to the city of Bristol. The city will build a piazza in infrastructure. This is recommended from the BDTC to the city council. And this is just preliminary, what they told me real quick in 30 seconds. We will be having a special city council meeting within the next week or two, as soon as the seven of us could coordinate our schedule to have a meeting. Councilwoman, are you leaving next week?
I am out of town from the 22nd through the early evening of the 24th.
Okay. So we'll coordinate. It'll be either next week or the following week. We will be having a special city council meeting to address the BDTC motions to the council and then we'll go from there. So stay tuned for a date on that. They should be, we should have a date within the next 48 hours, I would say. The other thing that I wanted to just quickly is, there's been many questions as far as why the city isn't more involved, the city, when I say mayor, council, more involved than the BDTC? And why there's not more reports to the council and so on and so forth. First thing we say, many of the meetings that happens at the BDTC have lately especially have been taken under executive session, which means they're not open to the public because there was negotiations going on. So I just want to give a little timeline as far as what happened with the BDTC, why we have the BDTC today, and why it's not under the city's control. Bristol Mall, Bristol Center Mall was purchased in March of 2005. The city was involved in extensive litigation to terminate the lease with Ocean State Job Lab. In late 2006, the ordinance committee began a series of public hearings at an ordinance which created the BDTC, Bristol Downtown Development Corporation. During these hearings, many people expressed concern that the BDA was already overworked with other projects such as Main Street, North Main Street Streetscape, Southeast Industrial Park, and a Northwest Industrial Park. An ordinance was passed in 2007. The BDTC was created specifically to prepare a project plan for the area known as the mall at Bristol Center and to supervise the coordinated construction for revitalization of this project. The vote passed five to two. The five council members and mayor that voted for that was Councilwoman, then Councilwoman Zappo, Councilman Minkowski, Councilman McQually, former Mayor Bill Stortz, and Councilman Meyer. There were two no votes. As a matter of fact, that was this meeting that was the infamous scripted meeting. Benchmarks were created for the BDTC, including appointments of members, creation bylaws, hiring a project manager, and drafting of requests for qualifications for redevelopment of former malls. The mall was demolished in 2008 and the site was cleared. Proposals were sought for redevelopment of the mall site in September of 2009. Proposals were received in September of 2009. The BDTC and council, city council, accepted proposal made by Renaissance Downtown at Bristol and worked began negotiating a preferred development agreement, which was finalized on May 2010, which is how we got to where we are today. The city does not have the power to negotiate with BDTC, with Renaissance, or any of the workings that are going on on the mall property. This has to go through the BDTC, which was legally formed. So that is just a little history as far as why we have the BDTC and why the council is not more involved. So I just wanted to re- remind everyone why we're, why we're, where we are today. That's all I have for announcements. Reports, starting on my left. I'm sorry. Reports.
I beg, yeah, realistically, actually, that's three items on. I have a kind of a motion to bring up. I hereby move that the city of Bristol prefer this matter to the chief building official to make recommendations to demolish city-owned property known as 95 Union Street, Assessor's map 31. I further move this matter, refer to Board of Finance for appropriations. I further move this matter to refer to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. Further move that mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same. Let's ask for a second.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion.
I just want to say that this is a property that the city owns that we were going to attempt to sell through the Real Estate Committee, but the Real Estate Committee paid a visit to that after the, after no bids came in, which was a surprise. The roof was completely rotted and when I was inspecting it, I almost fell through the floor. So, yeah, we definitely would like to see this building come down.
Let me also add to that, that the city will be, the Blight Committee will be taking, the Code Enforcement Committee will be taking down the property behind that, I believe, which is also very blighted. So then we will have an open piece of parcel cleaning up that neighborhood and then we'll go from there with what happens with it. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. N5B.
I hereby move, excuse me. I hereby move that the city of Bristol seek requests for proposals pending a section 824 review by the Planning Commission for the disposition of property owned by the city known as 29 Pine View Street on map 27 of the Bristol Assessor's Office, and that the purchasing agent be authorized to request proposals, and that he send out a press release in addition to the legal notices and update the city website. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. And I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I have one more motion to bring up. I hereby move that the city of Bristol grant permission to the Memorial Boulevard Middle School Task Force to use the Memorial Boulevard Middle School for veterans' weekend events on various dates between November 1st, 2014, and November 11th, 2014. Said approval is subject to the submission of insurance certificates from all that will participate in the event. I further move this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works regarding janitorial service, service and the appropriate payment for said services. I further move this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same. Let's ask for a second.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mayor's Task Force on Memorial Boulevard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have reports that I'm going to pass down for all of you. The purpose of tonight was to give you a progress report since we have now been six months in the making. I wanted to just open with some general comments. This actually has been a work in progress since our meeting of last Wednesday and was only finished with taxpayer task force member input as late as 2:30 today with some final changes. So I apologize for not getting it to you ahead of time, but it's not anything that you need to act on tonight. It's really a reference document that I do hope you take some time to read and get a sense of what our plans are and how we arrived at them. The first thing that I wanted to say is from the standpoint of sharing the task force, we have been blessed with having a high level of enthusiasm with people who are participating, both on this side of the diet as well as in the audience. And there really is no barrier, as you can tell from these responsibilities that have been taken on by so many people who are volunteers. Comvolente, sharing the theater subgroup and organizing that, people going on field trips to other entities to gather data, and all of it is encapsulated in what I've given out to you. To quickly go through this, so that you can just see what we've done, there's an introduction, the background summary, what we were charged with investigating when the mayor formed the task force. And then we included a chronology, so that you can see as we went through month to month how our thought process developed. On page three, you will see some preliminary recommendations about the direction that we're moving in. And then from there, you will see at the bottom of page three, continuing on to page four, seven facts of where we believe we're headed. Things that I'd like to point out just in general quickly are the addendums that are attached to this. They include the reference cases that Jim Albert introduced concerning the use case surveys that we did. Also, there's been a lot of concern about sustainability. So we also included, and I stress that it is a sampling, of available grant programs that this building is now eligible for based on the fact that we, if you look at the next page, have finally received our listing on the State Register of Historic Places. That has opened up a portal of a variety of grants that we can now tap, which will lessen the taxpayer impact on whatever the rehab costs would be. I also just want to point out toward the end of the packet, you will see a letter from a private citizen that I received yesterday. And this is very indicative of the support that we've received. And I think that it's also important to show the range of support that we have. The letters from Don Giustino D'Alessio, many of whom you know, they're excited about this program and have also shared their knowledge of similar programs, including the Seek campaign, the Adopt a Seek campaign at the Warner Theater. Again, it's a fundraising issue that obviously we will explore. We are doing a lot of creative swiping from entities who have done successfully, but I think it also shows you that we are getting input wherever we go, whenever we have meetings, when we have 20 to 30 people in the room on any given occasion. We're also very thankful for the media coverage that it's generated because we think that that's brought in additional ideas. Constant sharing of articles and concepts, as you can see, Andy Adams outlined some of them. This is not a new concept. This is something that is being done successfully in a ton of communities, not only in Connecticut, but across the country. Our own city planner has informed me and shared articles with me. When he goes to his planning conferences, there's usually an entire track devoted to what communities are doing from a planning standpoint with these schools, because so much of our education cycle has gone into a new direction. There are thousands of schools throughout the country. So again, I think strongly that this is something, the project, the building, the location, the synergy with the park, the historic component, all of this should be looked at as a city asset. It's something that, just like our parks, like our education, the heart of what we are as a community, it represents who we are, and it also spans generations. And I think that that's important. So the preservation ethic is important. We're preserving something that's important to Bristol's past. It's also quality of life, the arts, the music, the synergy of co-working spaces, of everything that could possibly be potential therefore. So we're very excited to read it. We're going to continue working. The important thing that I also wanted to show later on in our agenda, we will have an agenda item to approve a contract with Drummy Rose and Anderson. This is the proposal that they gave us that Task Force members Peter Del Mastro, Frank Stosky, and I sat through the interviews. They're going to do the condition survey and we will have that back at the end of January, which will start giving us the cost basis that we can formulate for what's going to happen in terms of budget and financials, which is obviously going to be the foundation of where we go from there. Before I move on to a couple of quick action items that we need to take care of as part of this report, I would like to just ask for those of you who are here tonight, who have been so integral to the process, to just stand and be recognized for all the work that you have done representing this community asset. Couple of quick items related to the Memorial Boulevard Task Force that I'd like to pull in is, one, Jill Malbert has worked with Associate Spring to work out a parking plan referral for when we have an agreement. And we have already set that up and referred it to the Corporation Council's office. We were hoping that that could be reviewed in time for our November program. So even though electronically it's already been transferred, I'd like to ask for a motion that the parking plan agreement as presented by Associate Spring be referred formally to the Corporation Council's office for review. Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I do want to also note that we do have a cleanup date of November 1st. It's already been talked about. All of you are invited to come. To date, we already have probably 65 people who have signed up to be there, and now we're hearing from youth groups, confirmation groups, the high school groups that need that community credit, that will be coming as well. So for those of you who are interested in joining us, we are doing that from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We do have poster and schedules of everything that's happening. If any of you have a place to post it, that would be great. And most importantly, the veteran show on Sunday afternoon, which is going to showcase community talent. We actually have tickets with us tonight. This is what the ticket looks like. And if anybody's interested in purchasing $5 tickets, we have them. Debbie, raise your hand. Okay? You can get them from Debbie, so I don't have to leave the diet. We are looking to fill the room. And for those of you who have been to showcase some stars, you know the quality of events that will be produced that afternoon. And I think it's important for all of us to see the potential of what that theater can be. So I encourage you all to attend and buy your tickets. We are looking to fill the space, so that's six hundred tickets.
Councilwoman, can I just say, if you, if you bring some of those to my office, we'll make those tickets available for sale at my office as well.
Okay, I'll give them to you before we leave tonight. The last item that I need to resolve is the fact that we recognize, and there has been spirited discussion amongst all of our task force members and those who attend, that we do not want this to be viewed as a liability, as a taxpayer burden, or as yet another program that has to be funded. As I said, and I will reiterate, it is an asset. It is something that represents the best of Bristol. But we do understand that this is going to be something that will encumber private fundraising, grants, and all of the rest. Andy Adams during held of participation talked about what other communities are doing. We have that opportunity as well, now that we're listed on the State Register especially. I haven't drawn comparisons often to the Historical Society where I'm also involved, but I was berated for it after the last meeting because right in front of us, literally a quarter of mile from this building, is a neglected Bristol school that the Bristol Historical Society bought from the city for a dollar in 2001. And since that time, a committed group of private citizens has raised privately with very little public funds, over a million dollars to renovate and bring that building back to life. That too has a historic stake. It's the oldest municipal building that was built that's still standing at Bristol. It was built in 1890. And I think we can do a similar thing, and it can be done. So for those of you who are interested in joining us, we are always looking for additional people. We're looking for a great synergy and energy on November 1st, and we're looking for people to attend the afternoon of Sunday, November 9th, and also our official Veterans Day ceremony at 11 o'clock on Tuesday, November 11th, as well as the 7 o'clock Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble. From a standpoint of private financing, all of that money that is raised once costs are covered are going to go into a fund that will continue to pay for some of these expenses. The long-term view is to have a fund that will always be in place to pay for or to serve as grant matches, et cetera. We have an opportunity to have a fund agreeing to begin that process immediately with the Main Street Community Foundation. So at this point, I would also like to refer to the Corporation Council's office for the second time and agreements for them to review. And to clarify, we, the Memorial Boulevard School Task Force, is a public entity, and so as such, I would like them to review the draft agreement. Per the requirements that have already been vetted, we are also designating the Park Department as the secondary beneficiary. And for some reason, through IRS designated law, we do not go forward with this project. We must then designate where those privately raised funds can go. The Park Department of the city of Bristol already has a fund at the Main Street Community Foundation, so we felt that that was the closest parallel. So again, from a standpoint of that type of regulation, that's what would happen, but they meet on November 7th. And so I would like to have the Main Street Community Foundation have our reviewed draft agreement back to them so that they can vote. The sooner that we have that done, the sooner we can start accepting private dollars and grants. So I would make that in the form of a motion. Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Let me just add, and I don't want to speak for Court Counsel Office, but they will do their best to get it by November, November 7th, but I don't want to put a timeframe on there because they have regular city business as well. So they'll do their best, but no guarantees by that date.
I understand, Mayor, but I also do follow the Park Department agreement, and it's pretty much the same one, so it should probably make it a lot easier for them to do that review. Unless there's questions, that is the component of the report that I wanted to present in addition to the rate.
But there's other things involved in that Park Department agreement. So again, I'm not going to hold them to November 7th. As soon as they get it, the task force will get it, but they have regular business to do too. I know we've been talking about disagreement for a couple of weeks, so I'm not going to hold them to that 7th date, but they'll do their best. I'm sure they'll reach it, but just in case something happens, I'm not going to hold them to the date. Any other thing?
I mean, that's it for the Memorial Boulevard report. If you want to go over them.
Yes, motion made, second. Any other discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Committee reports, I'm going to start on my left. Give Councilwoman a break before you get into Code Enforcement.
I'll have dinner.
None, Your Honor.
None, Your Honor.
Yes. Sorry. I'll try to be brief. October 2nd, the school rating is council is holding a director's forum for early childhood providers. Dr. Myra Jones Taylor, Commissioner of the Office of Early Childhood, is scheduled to be the guest speaker. Great news for Bristol, for the Bristol community, the Connecticut chapter of Reach Out and Read applied for a grant from the, from Liberty Bank on behalf of the Bristol community to reach out and read site to a pedestrian pediatrician's office in Bristol. Dr. Susan Adi and Kaz Practice, the Pediatric Care Center will be implementing this program. The, I have a couple of motions from the Salary Committee. The first, the Salary Committee recommends to the city council to approve create the creation of a public safety technical support specialist position from local 233 with code 10 at $12.57 per hour to $28.51 per hour in the police department and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Second, motion made. Motion made, second. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I have another motion. The Salary Committee recommends to the city council to approve the elimination of the position of administrative assistant, local 233, code 5, at $17.51 an hour to $19.49 an hour. Upgrade the sales ratio clerk, the local 233, code 5, $17.51 to $19.49 per hour to code 6, at $18.73 to $20.81 per hour. And upgrade one principal clerk, local 233, code 4, $16.36 to $18.24 per hour, to a senior administrative clerk position, code 6, $18.73 to $20.81 per hour in the assessor's office, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I have a third motion. The Salary Committee recommends to the city council to approve creation of a part-time position, 18 hours a week with the extended hours of July and January of principal clerk in the tax office, local 233, code 4, $16.36 to $18.24 per hour, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
One last one, and now the, the Salary Committee recommends to the city council to approve the proposed revision to the personal policies and procedures in regard to overhiring and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Councilman? Rich? Councilwoman?
I have a brief Code Enforcement report. At the end of September, we received another Code Enforcement collection payoff through the city tax office. This one was in the amount of $64,612.37 for 30 lien plates, which had been demolished, I think that was December, February.
I think that was the first one we took out, no, second one we took out.
In the winter. So again, as indicated, these payoffs do come through, maybe not at the exact time that house is taken down, but this one was again a combination of interest liens and code enforcement. So that one has now come full circle as well. We also have a request to the city council for our standard assessment freeze program. This one is for 82 Tulip Street, and the recommendation from the assessor is to approve. And there is a prior structure and post renovation photo display that I can send through, but this is a standard motion. This month, Code Enforcement would have fallen after our council meeting, so usually you will see these on your consent agenda, but it didn't work out this month. So I will pass this down in case anybody has any questions or would like to review it, but the motion would be to approve the application for the assessment freeze for 82 Tulip Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And my last item, I would just like to say, from an observation standpoint, I went to housing court with a displaced tenant on to Housing Court with a displaced tenant on Thursday, who was a former tenant of one of our more popular landlords. And it was an interesting process to see come full circle as to what happens to tenants who rent from certain landlords, and how it gets disposed of in court. This tenant ended up being very successful, based on the amount of documentation that she has, and I think that we might be able to see more of that as the tenants who are affected by poor living conditions and code enforcement violations that are not corrected in a timely manner actually start to learn the process and gather that data. So, that was an interesting foray, and I think that will result in more of them as well.
Thank you. Let me just add a couple more things to Code Enforcement. The city took down another house this week, it was on School Street. This was a house that had been vacant for a number of years, number of code violations. I believe this is house number 13, guy? I think it's number 13 that the city has taken down due to this administration. This does not include the houses that the banks or owners have taken down due to enforcement by our code team. So, work is being done, and you see the positive things happening in the neighborhoods. Just to touch base, Councilwoman talked about 60-plus thousand dollars that came in from the Lincoln Place. This goes into a revolving account. This account was formed so that we don't, the city does not have to keep putting money into the code enforcement budget. As we get the money back, it goes right back into this account to be used again. So, it's working as we planned, and the money's coming in different times, so it's a great thing to happen. So, the city does not have to keep funding this account every year as the budget process goes along. I have one thing to read here. Mayor's Marketing Task Force. Just going to give a little history, then add a motion. North Star Report was commissioned and paid for by generous donors and local business, Bristol Chamber of Commerce and City of Bristol. The North Star Report provided many valuable recommendations and helped us develop a branding, logo, and tagline. One of the recommendations was to assign a brand leader or brand manager to implement marketing and branding devices, branding services, as is designated in the North Star Report. The Bristol Chamber of Commerce contracted with the city to provide marketing and branding services. So, we are now at a point where the Mayor's Marketing Task Force has to transition into a formal committee. I'm very impressed with the efforts of the Marketing Task Force. They have worked tirelessly for many months to get great product from North Star. They conducted public hearings and surveys to get input from the public so that we can do more to promote the city, its people, and businesses. On behalf of the city and the people of Bristol, I want to thank the Marketing Task Force members, Dave Mills, Howard Smellner, Mickey Goldwasser, Jack Ferraro, Sumuro, John Smith, Jim Albert, Merk Waszuski, I know I said everyone. Henry Martin, he knows who he is, Henry Martins, and Shiltev. Reverting to move into the next phase, I am forming a marketing committee whose functions will be to collaborate with the Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce to promote the city, evaluate and assess the implementation of the contract with Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce, and to make recommendations to the mayor and city council on the marketing brand efforts. And I have a motion, if I could have a motion, please.
Sure. The committee will work under the auspices of the Bristol Development Authority for Administrative Support and report from time to time to the City Council. There are so many good things happening in Bristol, we have exceptional gifted people and solid dedicated business, and I'm looking forward to seeing how they can build on the hardworking Marketing Task Force. And then again, ask to the businesses donated towards the effort, the Chamber of Commerce, and especially our task force, please, Joe.
Right, so can I have a second to the committee to work under the auspices of the Bristol Development Authority for administrative support and report to the time to time to City Council? Can I have a second?
Second. I made the motion, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Let me just say, the members of this committee will be Dave Mills, Howard Smellner, John Smith, Mickey Goldwasser, and Jack Ferraro. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Unfinished business starting back to our right.
Just a quick one. Do you think we could extend a thank you to the businesses that contributed to the initial, you know, I think it was $25,000 that the chamber put together from local businesses that helped us get the marketing company from that, from Tennessee, I believe, North Star? And even the $60,000 that they're contributing, I think we should thank those businesses that have contributed to help us head in this direction.
Yeah, if the chamber hasn't done so already, we will definitely do that. We'll work with them.
Okay.
None.
None.
And Chair has none. New business starting right far left.
No.
No.
I have one. As you may know, tonight, the joint board approved all the funding necessary to complete purchase of streetlights. We are also in a position to secure maintenance for the poles by approving the contract with Turi Masterson of Torrington. The bind of the lights themselves will recreate significant savings, something that I and Mayor continue to pursue. Once the streetlights are purchased, it is expected that the next fiscal year will see replacement of lighting fixtures as a separate initiative, which will secure more savings. In order to secure the streetlights, however, the contract with Connecticut CLP for purchase of the streetlights needs to be signed. Therefore, I ask for the following motion: to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the streetlight purchase, and to refer matter of the corporation to the Corporation Council for any necessary action.
Motion made, and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Designations?
There's one resignation, it's from Art Ward from Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption.
Motion to accept the resignation, some, motion made.
Second.
Second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Adam 9. Which is appointments. Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption to appoint Gregory Fortier to replace Richard Demars, Conservation Environment Member, resignation no term.
Some moved, second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Mayor's Task Force on Memorial Boulevard, Mayor's Appointment to appoint David Mills to replace Henry Burton, to appoint Janet Williams to replace William Stortz. School Readiness Council, Mayor Superintendent of Schools Appointment to appoint Dr. Susan Adiyanca, I know her by Dr. Susan.
Me too.
Pediatrician Member to replace Dr. William Brownstein, resignation to turn 8, 2016. That's all I have there. Adam number 10.
Resolution of authorizing the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents relating to the Quality Enhancement Grant from the Office of Early Childhood for July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2015, for $25,024 in prison bond finance for any necessary acting. There is a resolution to read?
I'm here to read the resolution.
I'll read. Be hereby dissolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that Mayor, and cocaine, or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to the application funding grant for the Quality Enhancement Grant from the Office of Early Childhood for the period of July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2015, one-year grant, including but not limited to any amendments to said application, and any final funding grant documents, and any and all agreements, and any amendments thereto with local service providers to implement grant.
I have a second. Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call starting right far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Adam 11.
Award of Contract 2P1493, Architectural Services for Roof Replacement at Northeast Middle School, Silver Puss Sully and Associates Incorporated for making $1,000,100, authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Can I revisit the Marketing Task Force? I have another motion, I think I should have read this one instead. I move that the Marketing Committee be formed to work under the auspices of the Bristol Development Authority, and its functions to collaborate with Bristol, with the Greater Bristol Commerce, with the Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce, to promote the city, evaluate and assess the implementation of contracts with the Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce, and to make recommendations to the mayor and city council on marketing and branding efforts. Can I have that motion, please? Motion made, second, discussion.
Yeah, Your Honor, just like a point of information to make sure we're doing this right. Did you need us to withdraw the first one from a little while ago, or no?
If, 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 yeah, it might be easiest to.
All right, so why don't I first move to withdraw the earlier motion regarding the task force odds and regarding the Marketing Committee?
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Good to catch you, Councilman. Now can I have a motion? I'll read it again. To move that the Marketing Committee be formed to work under the auspices of Bristol Development Authority, in its functions to collaborate with the Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce, to promote the city, evaluate and assess the implementation of the contract with the Greater Bristol Chamber of Commerce, and to make recommendations to the mayor and city council on marketing and brand efforts.
Some moved.
Motion made, second, discussion.
Yes. Didn't we have a contract of some sort that we?
We did.
Okay, so what is the?
This is now going from the task force to an actual committee.
But this talks about partnership with the chamber.
This talks about how they're going to report to the company, actually collaborate, what the functions are.
But that contract's still, like?
Absolutely, but what we expect from the committee as council. Any other discussion?
So, the committee, the committee is falling under the approval of the BDA.
That's correct, yeah. Which is what we discussed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Sorry about the confusion there. Adam number 12.
Authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute contracts with Quality Data Services Incorporated for software license and annual support of QDS software, and to refer to Corporation Council for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Adam 13.
Award of Contract 2A1491, Annual Requirements for Maintenance of Municipally-Owned Streetlighting to Turi Masterson Incorporated, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents. Some moved.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Adam number 14.
Award of Contract 2P1522, Engineering Services Survey of Existing Conditions and Conceptual Design Engineering for Memorial Boulevard School to Drummy Rosane Anderson Incorporated for $25,000, contingent upon approval of the task force and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
Yes, this is an engineering survey on existing equipment, which we've already had surveyed twice since 2008. In 2008 Memorial Boulevard Task, where there was another Memorial Boulevard report done, which covered all of the equipment. In 2010, the Space Needs Study covered all of the equipment. I'm going to read one little thing from it. The existing boilers have met the end of their useful life expectancy and should be replaced with new boilers. I'm going to assume that in the last six years, boilers haven't improved, but I don't think we need to spend money on an engineer to tell us that they're broken down. This Memorial Boulevard study that was done, and I believe was done through the school board, cost the city about $70,000. It included all the, all the information needed on the school, its existing conditions, and the improvements that should be made to make that theater into a useful, viable commercial theater. I don't see why we should spend another $25,000 to do this sort of study again, to do a minor study just on existing conditions. We know what the condition of that building is. The mechanical stuff is outdated, undersized, and needs to be replaced. This stuff can actually start to go off the bit, and rather than spend $25,000 examining it, spend $25,000 replacing it, something.
Any other discussion? Let me, let me ask, I guess I'm going to ask Councilman, because you're on the board. Has the task force looked at to read this report that Councilman is referring to?
Yes, that report was one of our primary documents that we've worked out of, and while I do understand Councilman Carlson's concerns, what we're looking for is much more than telling us about the boilers, and his point is well-taken, we know that. But, we need a more of a global view, both from a cost budgeting standpoint, as well as a prioritization standpoint. And either Roger Russo or Frank Stosky, who's with us tonight, could probably speak more eloquently to this than I can, but Drummy Rosane was actually the company that did the Memorial Boulevard. So, what we're trying to do is layer on their existing knowledge of the building, not recreate the wheel, and take it to that next level, fitting what we know needs to happen there, heating and cooling being a primary issue, but there's other issues. There's ADA issues, there's access issues, security issues, windows, ceilings, staircases, elevator use, all of that. We're looking to take it so that we can present back to the Board of Finance and the City Council an accurate picture of what those costs represent. So, if you read the memo that Roger prepared, it's not only a building analysis, but it's also assigning construction costs to correction of building deficiencies. So, they were by far, based on their body of knowledge and what they already know, it was far and above a better fit for us, because we are not going to be recreating the wheel and having yet another study that gathers duff or doesn't give us real information. I think strongly that this is the right way to go, because what we don't want to happen is six months, two years from now, to come in and say to you, oh, we need $3 billion because we didn't know, dot, dot, dot. That's what we're trying to avoid, and I will yield the floor to Roger if he would like to expand, or Frank even, to give additional information, but that's what we're trying to do.
Good evening. Frank Stosky probably has been through the building a lot more recently than I have, but I will tell you that we do have a lot of information on the Memorial Boulevard School, and it may be the study that we have relating to the boiler, when the building was shuttered, we have the asbestos reports, we have a lot of information on the structure. But when the building was shuttered and we started talking about selling the building, a number of city buildings came, city departments came forward to try and relay potential uses and potential costs associated with that, with the reuse of the building. We really didn't have any specific costs attributable to it. I think what the committee is trying to accomplish is to try and ascertain what is truly necessary before you take the next step before Board of Finance. And they may be things such as egress, there are a number of stair issues, that since the building has been shuttered as a school, you can't leave in their current existing state. They were, as a functioning building, you could have left them. Now that the building is shuttered, to reopen it, you need to address issues of egress, and it's throughout the building. The elevator is in poor condition. What specifically needs to happen to the elevator to bring it up to speed? The building has a school, never had air conditioning. If you truly do need to have air conditioning within the building, depending on what the end purpose would be, what would be a reasonable assessment for what those costs would be, and I think that's what the committee is trying to accomplish, just trying to get a scope, so that by the time you meet with the Board of Finance, you can actually come up with an action plan.
Anything that has to do with adaptive use or repurposing is going to take into key issues. The key issues that we've identified are the ADA code compliance, the zoning compliance for uses and parking, the mechanical electrical plumbing upgrade, and anything that would be considered the self-supporting uses, which the theater falls under. be considered the self-supporting uses which the theater falls under. So, you know, I think that this is probably the best bet and the best investment that we have with this integrated design process that they're proposing to get those numbers that we need.
Discussion? Yeah, you know, my concern is not limited to boilers or two minor things. I do know a building has got a considerable amount of trouble with it, and I think it's been made clear in two reports already. We will need to make sure that this engineer knows what the final use for each and every area would be to, you know, have a complete report that I work for them. And again, I, you know, this, this original report was very thorough on the theater area. It covered all the heat load and everything else, so I, you know, I don't see any reason to reinvent the wheel on it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
No.
Well, no, motion passes. Adam number 15.
Resolution regarding approval of Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program. There is a resolution to read?
I'm going to read the resolution.
Yes, I got it. It resolves in order to promote the goals of scientific, educational, literacy, historical, governmental, charitable, and nonprofit entities located by the City of Bristol by drawing upon the skills, knowledge, and experience of senior citizens. The City Council of the City of Bristol hereby establishes a Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program for senior citizens who choose to donate their time, talent, and experience by volunteering to provide services to such entities as follows. Qualifying senior citizens who volunteer to provide services to qualifying scientific, educational, literacy, historical, government, charitable, and nonprofit entities located within the City of Bristol shall be eligible for a tax credit on their real property bills, tax bills, in accordance with the provisions thereof. In order to qualify for the benefits of the Senior Citizens Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program, taxpayers must be age 65 or older, own real property in the City of Bristol, must occupy the property as a principal residence, and must have an annual gross income not more than the maximum amounts promulgated annually by the Connecticut Office of Policy and Management in accordance with Section 10, Connecticut General Statute of Section Participating senior citizens may earn an annual tax credit of $300 by performing a minimum of 50 hours of volunteer service in the fiscal year to qualified nonprofit entities. B, program shall apply to volunteer work performed in fiscal year 2014-2015 and after in accordance with the provisions, the resolution, and the guidelines and policies referred to in paragraph D. Tax credits shall be applied to the tax bill due July 1st following the fiscal year in which the work is performed. The tax credits earned by the participants in the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Program shall not exceed $24,000 in a fiscal year on a first-come, first-served basis. The assessor and senior executive, senior center executive director shall develop guidelines and policies to administer the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program, including guidelines for qualifications for participating seniors and participating nonprofit entities, and for timing and form of applications. The city shall review and evaluate the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program after one year from the date of its approval. Ask for a second?
Resolution made in second, discussion. Let me just say that this is something that I brought up last year, and I think it's a great thing. I want to thank the ordinance committee. I know you did a lot of work on this, you looked at a lot of different plans, want to thank the Corporation Council for jumping into it as well. I'm excited about this, I know the seniors are excited, and hopefully they'll take advantage of it. 50 hours a year is not a lot of time, it's one hour a week, they probably are, most are probably already doing that as it is. So, I want to thank the ordinance committee and the Court Council.
Your Honor, just real quick, Ted. I've heard from a lot of people out in the community who have said, well, you know, this might not be able to help as many seniors as you think because there are still a lot of seniors that need help that might not be able to commit any time to volunteer service and the like. And we, I don't want to speak for the ordinance committee, but my impression is we all certainly understand that, and it's important to every one of us up here, ordinance committee or not, every one of us up here that's been elected by you, to do what we can to ease the burden on all of our citizens, but especially our senior citizens. From my perspective, this is a good place to start, and it is a pilot program so that over this next year, we might be able to continue to improve, to figure out what alternatives, or maybe not alternatives, but alterations could be to this ordinance to make it more beneficial to more people, and we can grow from there based on how it works throughout this pilot year. And that's the intent here from what I understand, and that's why I'm excited to support it tonight. And I thank the chairman, Mr. Carlson, and my colleague from the Second District, also on the ordinance committee, Mr. Mize Nikowski, for leading this effort, and I'm excited to support it tonight. Thank you.
And then I've got to say one more thing. Apparently this program is going to go over fairly well. Now, this program is designed similar to a program run by the City of Manchester. I think that was similar graphics to us, so I think it'll go over fairly well. People apparently already attempted to sign up down at the Senior Center, and I have actually received an email from one person who wondered if he qualifies for it because he has donated 28 gallons of blood. Unfortunately, that was listed in our qualifications.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, in the documentation that was provided to us, it says that eligible residents must first obtain an application from the assessor's office, but then they have to turn them in at the Senior Center. Is there a logistical reason why they have to start in one city office and then end at another? Is there something that the assessor's office needs to do for them to assert an eligibility?
I want to answer that.
Well, our sister's coming up, let me say that Patty at the Senior Center, Senior Center has, has a list of all volunteer places. If someone wants to come on the program, perhaps volunteers that have a, somewhere that's not on the list, that's still open, she will look at everything that comes in and the list will be adjusted.
Um, that's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Eric.